And I missed, I missed the email.
Did you say any serious?
I mean.
Some of my opinions. And.
Well.
Just public courses. Citizens.
Both folks.
And.
This is just. Listen, we do. Proposals.
You have to see. Those are three of them. I've actually heard a lot.
Right. It's kind of what their proposal.
I've been there.
Yeah, I've got like twenty of them. I've actually heard about them a lot. Oh, and I'm not very bad. If you didn't want to.
I mean, I don't disagree. They're within. They're within regulations that. We can ask.
Could bring in all of the.
We can't force them.
Not very. Sure, so far the important.
Yeah, like, like. When did I? Today. Yeah. Yesterday. Yesterday. Yeah, it was okay. Yeah, I was looking at all of them.
So many times. Time to check it back.
And well. Part of correct. Are you still? Are you still?
We show engineers.
Yes. That's.
Performance. Right. Something. How are you saying? Between other. Yeah, instead.
What kind of person? I think that was.
Also. Yes. I've never seen her. Yeah, well. No, I wasn't. I was here. I remember. Sit right here. We had it.
Hey, it's six o'clock. We'll get started. Thank you, everyone, for coming to Plankish Meets Night. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And the invocation of thought tonight will be given by Commissioner King, and the pledge allegiance will be led by Commissioner Anderson. We'll go to that point.
Our dear Holy Father, we're grateful to be able to be gathered here as a commission to discuss the needs and desires and plans for our wonderful city. We're grateful for the city and the opportunities it provides to its citizenry. We'll ask a blessing upon us that we'll be able to do the things that are right for our city and right for the people. We say the same just Christ of them.
Amen.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is to adopt tonight's agenda. It's been posted in accordance with state laws. We take a motion to adopt.
I'm.
A second.
Excellent.
All in favor.
I.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion is, or meeting agenda is adopted. Next item is our minutes from our March nineteenth meeting. I'm Archie. Or March eighteenth, sorry. Looking at two places. Not getting it right, either one. Uh, March eighteenth meeting. So do we have, and they're, we've been, they're part of our packet. Do we have any updates or corrections? Otherwise, we can take a motion to adopt the minutes.
Jared didn't see anything to correct, and I'll move that we adopt the regular meeting and the work session for March eighteenth.
Thank you. A second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Um, Vice Chair Hunter abstained. So we will go ahead. That motion passes. With the next one is public, time for public comment. This is an opportunity for the citizens to address the planning commission regarding concerns for things that are not on tonight's agenda, are not scheduled for public hearing tonight. So we do have a public hearing tonight. So if you're here for that public hearing, please wait for that time. If you do have a comment other than on that public hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comment. Please try and keep it about three minutes or less. Okay, go ahead and close public comment time. Uh, next item is a public hearing. It's a request for a approval of commercial site plan. Noah, you got this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, the city's received a site plan application from Costco. We've been talking about it for quite some time, and we're excited to have Costco interested in the city. Uh, there's a staff report in the packet and also on the website. Uh, this, the, the staff has been busy reviewing the plans for compliance with all of the city ordinances. Uh, I can go through a, a kind of a quick overview of, of some of the basics of the plans without um, getting too far into the weeds.
Okay.
Um, the location is on Three Thousand West and Antelope Drive, just south of the Glen Eagle Golf Course. Um, it's west of the Syracuse Arts Academy. So you can see here, their proposed store. The main entrance faces northeast. Around the perimeter, there'll be some out parcels. Um, it's a pretty um, standard layout for Costco with the parking and the out parcels, and then on the corner is the gas. Uh, there'll be some significant public infrastructure that will be needed for, to serve the increase in traffic. Uh, there'll be a new public road that runs north-south on the west side of the parcel, and then there'll be another east-west running road to the south, along with the new roundabout. They'll also have a, a private drive that's right in, right out here, and also here on Three Thousand. So Three Thousand West is a, is a city road. But Antelope, of course, is a, as a UDOT road, so Antelope does dictate the improvements here.
Is it, is it Three Thousand West or right in, right out, or will it be either way?
This will be a right in, right out, this north entrance.
Uh huh.
And of course, the roundabout will be full service. And they have designed this roundabout to make sure they can accommodate trucks. There's even the kind of a through lane here. The, the truck loadings over here. Uh, on the west side, there'll be a wall and landscaping. Um, yeah, the UDOT uh, will not, at this time, has said they won't allow a light here, but of course, Three Thousand is already signalized. Um, like I said, staff has reviewed all of the aspects of the plan as far as the site plan, landscaping, parking stalls, the, the whole thing. And uh, along with the development, since it is a, a large development that will be more than just the store, it'll have those out parcels, and it'll also um, set up development possibly to the south. There's a development agreement. So planning commission's role tonight is, is kind of two parts. One, review the site plan, which is an, an administrative type deal where we're reviewing our ordinances that we have on the book, which is within the purview of, of planning commission. The, the second part is that development agreement. Um, any land use related things, uh, planning commission's role is to review and make a recommendation to city council who will make the final decision, because there are some things that are tailored to make sure this is all, everything's documented as far as what the city agrees and, you know, who's doing what and all of that. Um, I know that there's been some discussion about the architecture of the building on social media, which I can address uh, to a certain extent. Um, you know, our ordinances, you know, we're responsible for our ordinances, not any other city. I know that you know, there's other Costcos and other cities, and you'll see different requirements, but all that we can require is what's in our ordinances. And so we have done a, a thorough review. Um, they have included a lot of, a lot of um, elements that will make the building attractive. Uh, let me zoom in here. Sorry for the excessive scrolling. So here's a, a rendering of some of the materials and what the entrance will look like. Uh, it does have a, a similar layout to the Meridian Idaho building, where it has a chamfered edge that faces the, the northeast corner. Um, so you'll see they've got these, these stone columns uh, with the steel trellises. Then above the column, there's CMU, and then there's this other band of, it's called a soldier course. If anybody's been around brick laying, that's, it's kind of a fancy little change the direction of the brick. On the sides, you can see there's a parapet that breaks up this roof line, and that parapet is also a different color that that uh, kind of breaks up the long walls. I mean, it, it's a warehouse, so in any way you cut it, it's a warehouse, but along the along the, the base, there's CMU, uh, split CMU. Um, some of the other architectural elements um uh, include kind of some multicolored uh, banding on the top, and then any of the rooftop elements will be painted to match the building. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else I need to bring up. Um, there is one element of the development agreement, just so we're aware, there, that, uh, or there's a few different ordinances that the city is agreeing to add into the development agreement. Uh, one of the ordinances is, would require uh, some variation along the wall every thirty feet, which our ordinances are really designed for like a retail multi-tenant building, where you'd get more of that along a warehouse. May not make sense to have that much zigging and zagging. But you can see the, all of the different elevations and what they're proposing. Um, as far as uh, landscaping, they're above our required landscaping percentage. Um, we require fifteen percent. Um, they're providing crosswalks um, so that there'll be some pedestrian connectivity. Um, and include, I won't go through the development agreement, but it's included in the packet, which is posted for the public. Um, but yeah, I'm here. If you have any questions, the applicant is in the audience.
Will the crosswalks be like we've talked with the new ordinance with?
Yes. Yep. If you look at the, at the plans, they, they are incorporating that. That was a comment that we've worked with their engineer to make sure it gets incorporated.
Cool. Okay. Anything, any questions for Noah? Otherwise, we'll go to public hearing.
No, maybe just one with the new ordinances we've implemented recently. Um, we did have a bicycle friendly commuter type thing if people wanted to bike to this. Are we?
I noticed there is a bicycle thing on there.
Yeah.
There are bike racks.
Yep, that was a comment, and then they, they, they edited their plan to include some bike racks.
Yeah, I saw that on the drawing.
Oh, good. They put those in.
Okay, thank you, Noah. Okay, we're going, this is scheduled for a public hearing tonight. So we'll go ahead and open public hearing. And um, at this time, the, this is for this particular item. If you have a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comment. And please remember, this is a public co, this is a public hearing. It's not necessarily a back and forth between the planning commission and them, and the, and the resident. Um, during this time is when you can be able to make your comments. This is, we will not plan, I do not plan to open public hearing after this point. So this is the public hearing time. We'll take your questions. We'll write them down. Uh, staff or the planning commission will respond after public hearing is closed. The purpose of this is that for us to hear the public, not to have a back and forth conversation. Uh, please make, please state your name and address at the podium. Um, please keep your comment to three minutes or less, and the time is, is yours. One more quick thing for the applicant. Um, if you want to wait until after public hearing, um, I'll, we'll invite you up um, to respond to any questions or comments. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Shane Croton, address twenty-three fifty-three South Thirty-five West. Um, these comments may not be for the planning commission. Um, might be better suited. City. And. Um, but first. Um, where you are, but thank you.
Can we?
Really appreciate you guys coming. Um, I'm excited for you guys to be here. Um, first comment, site plan, love it. Site plan's great. Landscaping, love it even more. Um, building design, not so much. Um, it's, I think, it feels like it's been almost two years ago that I provided a public comment eh, to the planning commission as well as city council to um, push for the, what I call the Meridian design. Um, I have some of the same concerns as the residents had in Meridian, Idaho, um, that the design kind of has a, a cold industrial feel and doesn't harmonize well with the surrounding residential developments. Um, really, it's, it's more in line with the Ogden and Bountiful designs that are surrounded by lots of commercial. Now, I don't feel that it's necessary to follow the same path that the residents of Meridian took, filing a lawsuit, making Costco come back three times with design changes. My ask is, please update the Syracuse design to the same solutions you came up with for Meridian. Problems and concerns resolved. Uh, the great thing about this is MG2, their uh, global architecture and design firm, designs all their buildings. They designed the one up in Meridian. They, they, they're the designer for this one. Cut and paste. You know, the design is there. We're not asking for anything new. Just cut and paste. Um, I don't think this will cause any uh, delays to the project or have significant impact on their break-even days or return on investment. Uh, full disclosure, I live to the south and west in the residential developments from this location, and I am also employed by the city. I'm a building inspector. So one thing I've learned in that is that details matter. Uh, the entry design, the corner wraps, the use of multiple types of materials like stucco, rock, brick, uh, CMU really makes a difference. Um, it's, it's a design that's more aesthetically pleasing to the surrounding residential areas. The R1, R, R three zones that surround this. Uh, something else I've learned is good developers and builders meet minimum code, but great ones exceed it. Finally, two questions. Uh, first question is to the planning commission and anybody listening to this. If you could choose between the two designs, which one would you want? And second, uh, really for Costco, you'll, you'll hear many people say, I, I really don't care what it looks like. I'm just glad Costco's coming. But who would you rather have as a neighbor? Someone who cares or someone that doesn't? Thank you very much. Again, thank you for coming to Syracuse.
Thank you.
On Ormsby, eighteen thirty-three West, eighteen twenty-five South, just across the street. I think I would echo what the previous gentleman spoke. I'm not displeased at all with the design. And uh, I don't think I've been to a Costco in Idaho, so if it is better, let's have it. The fact is, large corporations like this, when they develop retail areas, are not nickel and dime worried about it. They will spend whatever they need to get in, and whatever this city requires, they will spend. They're not about to pull out. So if you have opportunities to make something better, go for it. It's what the planning commission's for. I've served many years on planning commissions, board of adjustments, and city councils myself. I am in favor of everything that's going on. Appreciate Costco coming. Appreciate the diligent work that the staff has done. Having said those positive things, I will just make one mention of what I always say at these meetings. Limited comment periods are useless because we heard the discussion of the planning commission. We don't know what you're going to talk about, and then we cannot reply, make suggestions, even though some of us have degrees in planning and such as things like that. After I sit down, I won't have any input at all. I, nothing personal, but I feel like the procedure and the same procedure at city council is detrimental to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike McBride. I live at fourteen fifty-three Brookshire Drive. And I'm actually here representing Glen Eagle Golf Club and our commercial development, which is directly across the street from Costco. And I'm not here to complain about the city's or the Costco site plan. It's great. What I am here is to make a public comment on UDOT's requirement to put a barrier down the middle of Antelope Drive, which will eliminate the opportunity for people traveling east on Antelope to turn left into our commercial development and golf course. If that occurs, and I've discussed this with the mayor and others, and, and they've given me reassurance that they're working to get this barrier eliminated. But that would severely impact our commercial development on the north side as well as the golf course. It would leave people traveling east on Antelope only one alternative, well, two alternatives. One would be to turn left in this new intersection on the west side of the golf course, and then drive through our parking lot all the way over to the new roadway that's already in place to get to the businesses that are along Antelope Drive and the new commercial development. If UDOT is looking for safety concerns, that would create one. Driving through our parking lot with people with golf bags, golf carts, and other pedestrians would create a very unsafe condition. The only other alternative people going east on Antelope would have is to go to Three Thousand West, turn left onto Three Thousand, and go all the way up to the new medical building road, turn left, come all the way back down through that hole in commercial development and into those businesses along Antelope Drive. And those businesses include Mountain America Credit Union, Take Five Auto Exchange or Tire Exchange, and the new uh, JAGS service stations being built. So I would just like to make, make this a public concern, to make sure that we get on the public record that we're opposed to any barrier in Antelope Drive uh, creating a right-in, right-out only on the north side of Antelope as well as it is on the south side. And the solution to this is exactly what they put in Logan, Utah, where they put a little turnout off of uh, Tenth West up there, Antelope here, to be able to turn right into Costco from Antelope, and then come into that turnout, going back out and going east on Antelope Drive, which would eliminate any need for a barrier down Antelope Drive, which is exactly the same pattern they've adopted in Logan. Again, I am grateful, and, and we're very excited to have Costco come. We want that to happen. We do not want to stand in the way of that occurring. We're trying to cooperate in many, many ways of, of helping Costco get here. But my complaint is really against UDOT, and we just wanted to make sure the planning commission is fully aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Perry. Um, I'm at twenty-four sixty-one South Thirty-five Eighty-five West, so west of this development. So I had two kind of concerns is uh, one, I, well, I guess three. So in the renderings, and I didn't dive too far into the plans, it kept crashing every time I tried to look at the plans. So um, some renderings showed grass, some showed kind of like a mulch brown or anything for the um curbs and things around the parking. I, I just didn't know. Most people have gone to like a zero escaping with rock. Um, we've seen a large variation in that rock, and some of them are tripping hazards and really frustrating to try and get over if you're trying to get out of your car. So if that aggregate could be smaller, just to reduce that chance, that'd be nice. Um, the other one is that half-street, I guess I would call it, that's going to go down the back line of the property of, of people there, scary. Uh, I think it was called the Ranchettes. Um, I understand why a blind is needed, um, and it's very nice that this includes um, that concrete wall and stuff. I would imagine that those uh, those residents would like to be uh, included in decisions as far as access to the properties and the, the back half of their property, if they have an opportunity to uh, get a gate or back access, or if that's going to be precluded. It seems like if it's a public street, they, they should have the option to access their property from the rear. Um, and then there was one other thing. Oh, the out parcels. Um, we have the kind of architectural renderings um, elevations for Costco itself, but I didn't see, and maybe it, it's further down the road. I kept crashing on me, but I didn't see really a master plan for those outbuildings um, of whether that's going to kind of exasperate, exasperate uh, the concerns with kind of the industrial design, or if, if we're asking, or if they're going to be putting limitations on the outbuildings to just make them more consistent with our kind of atmosphere. So that's my concerns.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask those in the room to pause for me. Is there anyone online that wants me to comment? I'm hearing voices, but I don't hear any. Okay, back to the room then. Okay, go ahead and close public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I did receive a number of emails that I believe wanted to be read in.
Okay.
I've got a lot of them.
All right, if you want to read a few of them then.
Okay, here we go. Uh, Dennis and Georgie and Butler, I am definitely in favor of the Meridian design. Don't need any more industrialized looking buildings. Let's keep going with more visually pleasant looks. Will benefit Syracuse and encourage more outside business, I think. The apartments have been pleasantly surprising in their exterior looks, not drab, but attractive in their own way. And some have participated in holiday lighting, adding to overall aesthetic elements. Concerned citizen. I got another one. Me, Jika Conine, Conine. Good morning. Please consider requesting the Meridian Idaho design it for our Costco. Colin Nichols, as a citizen who is enthusiastic about the Costco project here in Syracuse, I wish a lot of my support for the updated Meridian. a lot of my support for the updated Meridian designs for the store's facade. It will be a much better look for the store and the community at large. As Syracuse, the gateway to Antelope Island, a more rustic look will signal to both residents and tourists passing through that Costco is a part of this community and understands the area's culture, history and heritage. The standard boxy facade isn't an ideal fit for the area. As long as there is a Meridian option, that should be the primary design. We've got Todd Dietrich. Hello, I'm not sure I will be able to attend the meeting tonight. I wanted to say how happy we are that Syracuse City has chosen to be the new home of a Costco. We shop it in Ogden every other weekend. It'll be nice to have one this close to home. I am more concerned about having the Costco, but I do believe that it would be aesthetically pleasing to have one that offers the best look possible to make Syracuse look the best it can. I like what they are calling the Meridian look versus the squared off look. The Meridian look seems to have more of a welcoming look to it for what that's worth. The most important thing, which is probably already figured, is the that the bigger, the better. But looks are important to a business. Thank you for considering. Another one. Edo Jensen, we vote for the Meridian design. Jeff Blackburn, I live on thirty-three hundred West. I'm concerned about the traffic that will increase on Antelope Drive. It is becoming more dangerous already with the speed limit of forty-five and only one lane. We need a turn lane to get into and on and off of Antelope. Drivers are already going around us on Antelope when we turn into our subdivision. The amount of traffic is probably going to double. Antelope Drive at intersection of thirty-three hundred is already wide enough. Will you look into restriping to accommodate turn? Turn lanes and a merge lane? Oh, and as far as the design, I would prefer to have it more down home Syracuse looking than a big warehouse. Reed Taylor, I do not want an industrial design. I prefer the Meridian Idaho design. Kirk Strickland, please urge Costco to incorporate the Meridian design for their new Syracuse shopping center. Teresa Smith, hi, I saw on Facebook the two designs of the Costco. It referred an industrial looking building and one similar to the one in Meridian Idaho. I would love to see a more aesthetically pleasing look to our Syracuse one. It is literally being built in a neighborhood that I drive by every day, not an industrial park. Please consider this in your negotiations with Costco. Jared Stoker.
My love.
Can we mute, please?
I've got Jared Stoker, please do the Meridian. Let's keep a little class in Syracuse. The storage units down the street, put in extra effort to make them look nice. Costco should be done, should be able to do the same. Let's take a little pride in how it looks. If it's closer to the Freeport Center, it might be okay with the industrial look. This is across from the golf course and surrounded by single family subdivisions. Let's make it nice. A concerned longtime Syracuse resident. Danny H, as a resident who lives just one block west of the proposed Costco site, I make a formal request that the Meridian design be built at this location. As I and others whom I've communicated with in the area feel that this design would fit better with the architecture of nearby buildings. Thank you for your consideration as a matter. John Stout, hello, Costco representatives. Thank you for desiring to build in our great city of Syracuse. Utah currently hold a Sam's Club membership, but plan to swap for Costco when the building is completed. While I am more than happy to have a Costco of any design or community, I would like to make my thoughts known that the Meridian design we better fit would better fit our community of humans. Either way, I thank you for bringing your business to the to our great city. Rebecca Call, hello, I am excited for Syracuse to have a Costco. I saw some plans for the look of the Costco being planned and would like to request a more beautiful and less warehousey look like the Costco in Meridian Idaho. I feel this would better reflect the type of growth and progress Syracuse would like to make. I feel the current plan look appears like a Walmart. Thank you for your time. Zane Beckman, hello, I am writing as to comment on the design of the Costco being built in Syracuse. As a resident, having industrial looking building in the area where the Costco is being built would look unpleasant since it seems like they want to go with an industrial look. From seeing what someone posted, the Meridian design would look better for for it where it is being placed. Since the cows will no longer be in the location they are at, which is one of the reasons why we moved to Syracuse, because my wife loves cats, loves cows. So at least having the Costco look somewhat pleasant to look at would help with the unfortunate moving of the cows. Thank you for your time. Kristin Stevenson, dear planning commission members, I hope this email finds you well. I am writing as a concerned resident of Syracuse UT regarding the proposed Costco development. While we welcome Costco and appreciate the benefits it will bring to our community, we take great pride in the aesthetic and character of our area. Given this, we strongly encourage Costco to use their Meridian style design rather than their standard industrial style building. This design better aligns with the architectural standards and visual appeal that our community values. A thoughtfully designed building would enhance the surrounding area and contribute positively to our local landscape. We respectfully ask the planning commission to advocate for this design choice to ensure that the new Costco reflects the high standards and cohesive look of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. We appreciate your efforts in making decisions that uphold the integrity and beauty of Syracuse.
I'm sensing a theme. Yeah, I'm getting the same theme.
Same similar messages. We got three more. Jason Staley, to whom it may concern, as a citizen of Syracuse, I'm proud of our community and the quality appearance we have maintained. I often hear that people travel to Syracuse Walmart because its aesthetics and cleanliness are better than a lot of the other surrounding stores. As Costco will act as the anchor business in this new development, it's important that it acts as an example of how we want the whole development to look. It sits in the midst of residential communities, not industrial areas. Please take our community's beauty, quality and aesthetic into mind as you plan this project. Thank you for coming to our great community. Shalina Croton, dear planning commission, I am so excited to see Costco coming to our community. This area of the city is turning into what would be a great asset for Syracuse. I live in the subdivisions to the west and south of this development. My biggest concern is that the design of the building doesn't fit well with the surrounding residential areas. I would not want to look out my window and see a large industrial style building with an in-your-face red stripe around it staring back at me. Please ask Costco to update the design of the building to the Meridian Idaho design and give us the same courtesy they give the residents of Meridian Idaho. And John Taylor, I would like the planning commission really to push for the Meridian Idaho Costco design. We have a nice golf course and a nice church building and a nice school right next to this area. I believe the city council has significant leverage now because Costco definitely wants to come here. Please be insistent and show that we don't want the typical ugly Utah standard Costco design.
There's definitely a theme there. Okay. If I can get the representative of Costco or Costco to come on up, we can discuss with.
Mr. Chair, looks like we got another comment over here.
Yes, come on up.
No?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. So.
There's parking on three thousand for that fairly dense residential housing that's there on the east side of that. I'm guessing that we're probably going to have some higher density housing south of Costco in that large field. I don't know, that's not on the agenda right now, but I don't know that that road that's currently there is the half street or the road behind Costco would accommodate on-street parking. And that seems to be an issue with almost all of the higher density stuff that I've seen so far. You see them on Antelope, you see them just about everywhere. So just one other.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll you make, I'll make an exception, come on up.
I never come forward, so. My name is Carol Jackson. I live at twenty-seventy South, thirty-three hundred West, so I'm right there. The only comment I wanted to make, it it sounds like so many people are concerned with the look. But there was one comment about the traffic. The traffic is one of my big concerns because as another gentleman mentioned, there's only one lane when it turns into the neighborhood that I'm just kind of curious what what the plan is for for the roadway. So that's my big concern. And I hope it's, I don't know if it's addressed, where where I can find out about that. Okay, thank you.
Since we kind of reopened public here, public car or public hearing, does anyone else want to make a comment before I close public hearing? We'll address it in a minute.
My name is Julie Kurzweil, nineteen seventy West, twenty-two fifty South. I just want to welcome Costco. And you know, we're not in Meridian Idaho, we're in Syracuse, Utah. And I'm grateful to have him come, and I'm grateful for the way it is and just grateful to have him come and be here.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing now. I I'd like to invite the representatives of Costco or the company, we can address some of these questions that have come up. Or the developer as well.
I can start off here. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission and city staff. My name is John Shaw. I am a real estate development director with Costco at the home office, address seven thirty Lake Drive, Issaquah, Washington. And joining me tonight are Winford Tang from MG2, the project architect, and Jamie Marcosian from Kittleson, the traffic engineering consultant on the project. I'd like to start by thanking city staff for all their hard work to help us reach this point. It's much appreciated, including their thorough review of the site plan application that's before the commission this evening. I'd also like to thank the members of the public that have come tonight to speak on behalf of the community on this project, as well as the people that have sent emails. And it's great to see the level of participation in a community like Syracuse. We've worked hard with city staff very closely to align this project with the city's design standards. We believe that this effort with city staff has been successful and will promote the city's long-term responsible growth and economic development goals. We're excited to bring a Costco to Syracuse, and we respectfully request your approval of the site plan application this evening. I thank you for your time in considering this application. We are available to take any questions that you have.
Okay, I wrote down some of the ones from the citizens. The one about the the landscaping and the would it be, what would be in the the parking areas? There's concerned rocks or things like that was, you know, what would be in there?
There is some mulch in parking islands with the heat island effect and just trying to maintain that, avoiding tripping.
So mulch would be better than rocks.
There is some mulch in the landscaping.
That would be great. The the one about, I don't know what the answer to some of the people who I know you put a nice rock wall or masonry wall along the the west side there. Would there be any option to work with the citizens to make some? I don't know how you put a gate in a masonry wall, honestly, but.
Right, I I'm not sure where something like that would be located. It is a six-foot concrete wall. It might be a challenge to put something like that in and and where the trail would go through through private property on the other side of the fence.
Yeah, I can I can see issues there. And I'm, we can't ask you to say what the other buildings would be like, but do you have, or who will go into the buildings? But the other outbuildings, do you have ideas of what kind of designs they would need to be or?
There will be a development theme associated with this project. The projects that do go on to those outlots will be consistent with that theme. We have not identified particular users yet. Typically, a Costco will open up, operate for a while, allow people to figure out their access points before we're adding any other users in the vicinity of Costco area, including out parcels like this.
Okay. That was the ones I captured. I mean, the commission members have other questions.
I think the others were like Mike McBride's were primarily with UDOT.
Yeah, we could rest on that.
Sure, sure. We're we're working with UDOT. We're expecting comments back from UDOT. It's been a process. We do have a call scheduled on April ninth. Michael will be joining that call. We're trying to work out some sort of a solution. It is a UDOT determination. If we can figure out something that's a win-win for both parties, you know, we're we're for that. But it is UDOT that's making that decision at this time. So we're we're interested in having a conversation and see what a resolution might be.
Okay. Well, thank you, and I I do appreciate you going through the all the work you guys have done to meet with our staff and and go through and try and meet our building standards and and our design standards and things. And and it may not look like the Meridian Idaho one, but you've heard a lot of comments tonight. And hopefully it will, it will still be a nice design
Yes.
that we can be proud of here in Syracuse.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
We're just grateful you take your time.
Thank you.
There's a water. Sorry, I'm plugging into the weeds on this. There's a utility plan that puts in a new water, a storm drain all the way down to it's like twenty-seven hundred south. Is that part of the project or is that a separate project?
It's part of the project. It's not tied directly to the Costco part of the project. It's part of the Cook's future plans, and we worked that out between the city and the Cooks to run that down. That'll be part of the development agreement with the city because that'll.
In the development agreement, that is that, was that cost identified?
Yes, it is.
The other question I had was in the cost of the development agreement. Was that page forty-four, I think? Oh, yeah, there's the storm where I missed that bullet point. What on the costs for item thirteen, how how were these costs determined? Is there, so for example, the trail improvement, the right-of-way costs and the roundabout costs? Is there, has that been vetted with a pricing consultant?
Yes, we work closely as we're bringing a project forward. We work with the GC that's been assigned to the project, and so we're getting pricing from them during pricing exercises. Something like the roundabout, we're we're working with a civil engineering firm. We're working with Kittleson on the design, running those design iterations through the the GC and the subs that are be completing that type of roadwork and getting pricing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, maybe so question on a couple. So with that roundabout, you know, the double access or the double right turns, one going around the roundabout versus the direct access, there is that's an unconventional design as far as the right turn goes. You're going to have people that feel like they're going to have a free right yielding to people that are still in the roundabout. Little bit of safety concern there with how how close that is with the two. Looks like that's designed for a truck to be delivering to Costco. Most of the vehicles that are coming down three thousand West are likely going to take that first driveway to turn into the parking lot. And so just the numbers there that are going to be making that movement are going to be going to be smaller. And whether that's necessity to have that, I don't, that could be a discussion with the with city engineer already, but that was a safety issue that I didn't know if had has been part of discussion yet or.
Sure. We do have Jamie from Kittleson here, the traffic engineer who's worked on the roundabout. If you'd like him to address that.
If he's if he's got any discussion there that's happened.
Good evening, Jamie Marcosian, Kittleson Associates, address one zero one South Capitol, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero six. I'm the traffic engineering consultant for the project, and we've done a preliminary design of this roundabout, both from a traffic operations perspective and from a geometric perspective. The intent right now is to have two separate southbound lanes at the entrance to the roundabout. The farthest west lane would be the right turn only, with the intent that the easternmost lane being a through or left turn. So you wouldn't see two right turning vehicles in theory. easternmost lane being a through or left turn. So you wouldn't see two right turning vehicles in theory accessing the proposed new road on the south side of Costco. From a safety perspective, pardon me, I hear you loud and clear. Roundabout operations are inherently different in a lot of areas. And, you know, from the, from the intent of the design and the signage and striping scheme that will be in place with the construction, the goal would be to have every, every approaching vehicle yielding to traffic within the circulatory roadway, so within the center of the roundabout, prior to them making their turning maneuver, whatever, if that's a right-hand turn or if it's a through movement or they're circling around to make a left-hand turn or a U-turn in this case. So we will have appropriate signage up to federal highway administration standards through the manual uniform traffic control devices. And those will comply also with UDOT and city standard for traffic signage and striping. And, you know, from the convenience perspective and just additional safety considerations for large vehicles that do access Costco for the loading dock area, providing that little bit of extra space for them to make that right turn maneuver alleviates issues of off-tracking for their trailers into sidewalk areas or across landscaping and vegetation that may get strewn out into the roadway. So offers a couple of, a couple of benefits in those, in those capacities.
I guess, so the second lane, because that, you split that southbound lane into two just for the right turn.
That's correct.
And, okay. So you're not, not too concerned about two right turns, you know, coming, someone staying in that left lane to turn right into it, but the person that's southbound to turn right is now looking past travel lane into a roundabout where a vehicle could be going, exiting to go north or to make a left. And so you're that person is, you know, a southbound right is really looking at a lot of unknowns to make that decision at a yield condition. And so it's, that's the safety concern is that they're, they're looking at several vehicles doing that. I just didn't know if that was necessary to have that second lane versus having just one wider lane. And as that also decreases the pedestrian crossing distance that would be required there. So especially since you already have a, a right turn lane for southbound vehicles into the parking lot in the earlier driveway. That would be the second question would be that you have a pork chop there to prevent left turns out of that northern driveway onto three thousand west, but it's, you know, if most people come in turning right, they like to leave out the same driveway they came in. It's just a habit of most people. And just, I can see that most, that it's not going to be observed, that they're not going to take the right out. They're going down to the roundabout to make a full, most of it is U-turn. Or, you know, a full left out of there because they're going out of direction. So there's a concern coming out as far as enforcement of that right turn only from that driveway, again, on the, on the UDOT side on Antelope, you do have that barrier to keep people from turning left in, so they'll either turn at the light or go down further. And just as a separate thought with the concern with the golf course on the north side. There is a, an instance further east on Antelope Drive at Main Street, so SR one twenty-six, where they have a similar situation and they still allow a left turn into a driveway with a median on the right. So it splits the through and the right turn lanes or and the left turn lane. So there is, it does look like there's enough space that you could still allow a left turn into the golf course with that, if you were to shift the center median and, and allow that. So with your discussions with UDOT, there is precedence that they've allowed that before. It's into the Burger King parking lot, if you want to look it up, just further east in, in Leighton. So then one last question there on nineteen fifty south, just from here that you, if we can go to the next page. You provide pedestrian access across nineteen fifty south, but you don't have it going across this, the new road A. And your, your sidewalk ends, so you're, you, you had, provide access of sidewalk on the east side of the road and connection sidewalk on the west side, but there's no way for pedestrians to get to that sidewalk. And if you can scroll down to PDF fourteen. Yeah, and scroll to that or pan up to the.
Sorry, the computer's just being really slow. It's a big package. It just keeps killing my iPad too, whenever I try to scroll through it.
It's in the packet. I don't know what page it is in. One more page down.
Sure, it's not this one?
Yeah, it's because your, your new public road A, it goes off the page on the left side going down. It's connecting to nineteen fifty south. Yeah, so right up in there. So you're, you're providing ADA ramps on the west side, connecting on nineteen fifty south, but your sidewalks end going on the west side. And on the east side, you have sidewalk coming down, but you don't have ADA ramps across that road. So there, if, if somebody in a, you know, wheelchair or a stroller, they come to that, they have to get over the curb, over the park strip, onto the sidewalk until they can get to sidewalk access. So that would just, would, would like to see a connection there across that, that road. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. Agree with the, with the connectivity there. I think it's a pretty straightforward component to address with future revisions to the site plan and design package as a whole, and certainly prior to construction, be possible. Would just like to address safety concern for the roundabout. In designing the roundabout layout and situation of those two southbound lanes and with any of the approaches to that roundabout, we do what's called a site vision triangle assessment. And in that, in that assessment, we're looking for driver field of view, given their location and proximity to other vehicles, other turn lanes, other users in the roadway. We do comply with and meet all the, all the standards within the Ashville Green Book for site distance and with the roundabout design guide in, in both the southbound right turn, but also the remaining approaches to the roundabout intersection. So wanted to address that just as far as that site distance component that you talked about. Having to look through, you know, a separate, separate travel lane, a roundabout, you know, their circulatory road lane, roadway and other vehicles as such.
That entrance to the fire department there. Is it, is it permissible to have a driveway entrance that close to the roundabout there?
It is. It's effectively, we're just meeting minimum access spacing for the driveway off of the new public street. But then also for the emergency use, we're cutting back the length of the splitter island on the north approach to allow for full movement access into or out of the firehouse by fire engines, different emergency vehicles and services.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for coming. There were still a few questions that I wanted to see if staff could address. The water shares question, do we have a number on that one?
Yeah, yeah, we've had that conversation with Costco and they're willing to dedicate to the city the required shares per our ordinance. So that, that says four acre feet of water per irrigable acre. In a general commercial zone, they're required to have fifteen percent. So turns out to be like nineteen acre feet or so.
And then the other question, I guess we'll just work with the, the city and the developers work with UDOT to try and figure out the, the issue there. As far as traffic on Antelope, it's a state road, you know, we don't have a whole lot of control over, over what UDOT does. As you're seeing tonight, we're trying to to work things and UDOT has their rules and things they follow and, and so we can do the best we can to work with them, but we can't put requirements on UDOT. No, they always trump our city rules.
One, one thing to note with that is there is a left turn lane that is being added in front of the Costco for, on the east or the west side driveway. So even though there's only one turn lane for the neighborhoods, there is a left turn line into the Costco. So that wouldn't be Costco's responsibility to fix the neighborhood entrance.
Yep. That's a, that's a UDOT issue.
I also kind of want to just voice my statement and reiterate what I've said. That the fact, because I was looking at that too and looking at the analog, at the Burger King analog location earlier and they, they did make a concession to that. I think that is a solid argument because I agree with what Sir McBride came up and said. And that, that is an impedance to the business on the other side. And I think if they made an exception once, they could easily potentially do it again.
And it's on the same road.
Right, exactly.
And then the other question about the, what could go on south of the, of the development here? As far as high-density housing, I think the most that could happen there is a PRD zone. It doesn't meet the requirements for a mixed-use zone or anything like that. So that would be the, the highest as far as highest density housing. And you'll see, we have a lot of those in Syracuse right now. In fact, I think we have one on the agenda tonight also we'll be talking about. That was, that I, I think the, the commission capturing the questions that we need to address from the public comment. Okay. Any other questions from the commission then? Or comments, or we can take a motion? Oh, I have a question. Do we need two motions? One for the site plan and one for the development agreement? Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll need two motions and one for the site plan, which is planning commission controlled, and one for the development agreement, which will be a recommendation to city council.
Mr. Chair, I can make a motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the site plan for Costco located at three thousand and one on Antelope Drive.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Seconded.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, first part of the motion passed. Now we need a, a motion for the development agreement.
Chair, I'll make a motion to propose or send on to the city council agreement for the development agreement for Costco development.
Okay.
And I might ask on that last one, do, for that connectivity issue, do we need to put that in or is that going to get addressed? Sorry, I didn't speak up.
That's okay. We haven't had a second yet. Colin, do we have to drag that or is that something, or Stella, do we need to add that in the motion?
Yeah, you can say, or, or to address all staff comments or including the sidewalk on the south stub road of the north-south road, or however you want to word that.
Okay, so the sidewalk on nineteen fifty south. Okay, so you okay with adding that to the motion then?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. We have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And I think Costco, may I represent, you've heard the citizen, the Syracuse citizens in Syracuse City are very excited to have you come. Next item on the agenda is a final plat for Syracuse Arts subdivision. As I mentioned, this is actually one of the PRDs. So those had questions, PRD would be like, this is a good one to stick around for. Okay, Roy, you've got this one?
I do. Might just take me a moment to open the full packet again. Oh. All right. We were having some technical difficulties there with the other program that we're using. So scroll down here.
I did read that whole. I did read the.
He can.
And we'll just take a moment here to let things calm down.
Can I ask that the, if you want to discuss the items, which is
Exactly.
Go out in the foyer, please. We continue our meeting. That's what I tried to.
Did you get that figured out for?
Sorry.
You're ready, we're ready to go?
Yeah, we are. Give everybody a chance to, to file out.
I agree because I can barely hear you.
Thank you.
I think we're probably good there. I'm glad we had so much attendance too. It's nice to see people participating. All right, so this is the Syracuse Arts final plat. So we've, we talked about a rezone this, with this one a couple of months ago. I guess that was last month, well, two months. Either way, the final plat here, this is, these are just kind of rubber stamps here, the next couple of items really, but this is just the extension of Claire Avenue headed north. The Syracuse Arts Academy building is already under construction, planned to be open this fall. And then we have city here to be dedicated to the, sorry, property here to be dedicated to the city. And then there's a private drive that's accessing the school, but it's not, not on the plat, it's just more of a driveway. So public road, public road, lots essentially a continuation of what's already down here to be developed at Woodside Homes. Everything that's shown here meets the requirements of the code, and so we would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. And this is just a discussion of motion. So any comment, it looks pretty cut and dried to me.
Same to me.
If you don't have, if there's no comments, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I have no comments.
Comments, maybe?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move planning commission approved the request Woods Cross Properties one O two for a file plot called Syracuse Arts Subdivision on property located at thirty-one hundred south, twenty-three hundred west in the PRD zone.
The motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item is another final plat. This one for Legacy Park Estates, phases four and five.
So this, I combined both the plots into the one report. So there are two motion language sections for your reference, but same situation here, Legacy Park Estates, this is an extension of what has been developed just west of Legacy Park off one thousand west. Originally, these were going to be combined, but so marketing-wise, a request from Ivory was that they develop these two, as this is abutting the park property. And then the rest of it was down to the southwest with the other, the other plat. So they weren't connected and so we decided to split these up into two different plots. Otherwise, this would be just one approval, but same with the other one, all of the requirements of the code have been met and all city staff comments have been addressed. So we'd recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the commission? We can take a motion then. Have we seen it before? Yeah. I think so.
Maybe I missed that day.
Well, it's, it was, it, the preliminary platform right came as part of the whole thing, this whole big one, right? And then they've done, as they've done finals of they've, as they've been.
Yeah, they've just been chipping away at what they have approved for the preliminary. So this doesn't change any of the lot layout. It's just those two lots were recommend or requested to be put into this plat and it just didn't make sense because it wasn't contiguous. So they're split up into plots.
Yeah, I didn't see any issue. I just, I thought it was odd.
Yeah, I think the preliminary came a while ago. I think they brought everything, all their phases.
Yeah, I remember. This is over by where that land trade was, right?
Yes, sort of behind like, we had a, there's an issue with the legacy park area.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what we were talking about earlier tonight, actually.
I can make a motion if no one has any comments.
Any comments? Okay, go ahead, please.
Mr. Chair, I move the planning commission approve the request of Ivory Homes for a final plot called. Mr. Chair, I move the planning commission approve the request of Ivory Homes for a final plot called Legacy Park Estates phase five on property located at twenty four twenty five south, twelve thirty west in the R three zone.
Okay, a motion, do we have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we went for phase four.
Do it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move planning commission approve the request of Ivory Homes for a final plot called Legacy Park Estates of phase four on property located at twenty four twenty five south, twelve thirty west in the R three zone.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item is adjourned to work session. Take a motion.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now in work session. Okay. City council, Paul, do you have anything for us? Okay, thank you. City attorney, anything for us?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the upcoming agenda items.
Oh, yeah, we do have a couple.
Say no, you don't have anything.
Oh. It's April fools. Well, we so for the fifteenth coming up, possibly if staff comments are addressed, we received an application for the the properties down off of three thousand west. I mentioned this one last time, but there's two properties in here. It's just a strip commercial. We had an architecture review committee meeting this week and provided all staff comments are addressed. We'd look at the fifteenth for that one. We also have a rezone and a general plan amendment for a property called Rampant Corner, which is down here. The southwest corner here, there's a there's some changes. We've talked about this one a couple of times and it keeps getting amended, but as we're trying to work things out, this is the newest amendment to kind of iron things out.
Is this the one that was commercial and residential combined that we kept having discussions about where the?
Okay, yeah, yeah, this is just an amendment of how that's laid out. Yeah. And then and assuming that general plan amendment is changed, then we would go for a rezone also. So running those simultaneously, and then we have the Banbury Towns Townhomes project. For that one.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
And the.
That's all I have, though.
Okay.
That's the P R D over by Badbury, right?
Yeah. I just, this is a question is we still get the map up. Can you go to the the west a little bit? I'm just curious about some of the land between it's on Antelope. Just just below the Walmart between between twenty five hundred west and and the highway freeway, the property there, has that ever been sold to the the north, the bigger piece across from the theater development?
Up here?
Uh huh.
Yeah, actually, let me pull up.
I know you dot had it. I was at one point really hoping the city would buy it.
Yeah, so this has been auctioned. I have talked to their appraiser, which usually means they they're pending their surplus stuff. So this this stuff is anticipated to sell here soon, but they're also looking at getting rid of these pieces as well, which I'd imagine won't really develop in anything, but but yeah, that one, who knows what that'll end up being, probably something commercial. That's what the the appraiser was anticipating.
I I would love personally, I would love to see the city buy that so we have control over what goes in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's up to city council, I suppose.
Since one of them sitting out here in the audience.
City council never listens to us.
Wink wink, nudge nudge.
Just write a check.
While you're on that picture across the street, we talked about that development right there on Quail Bluff Drive. Is that?
Down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this this reason was approved to professional office, the applicant halfway through that project kind of abandoned it. So it has been rezoned, but nothing's happening with it right now.
I I drive by there and see a for sale sign on it. I wasn't sure. I agree. It was what happened.
And it's already been rezoned.
Yes. Okay, anything else?
That is all.
Yeah, thank you. Anything for commission?
Yeah, I actually realized that there was one question that none of us asked during the Costco negotiation. I don't know if anybody knows, what's turnaround time?
That was a that was a softball forum, dude.
But very soon.
Yeah.
What I've heard before.
No, 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 I don't. I don't mean, I don't mean like, I know they want to break ground and everything, and I've heard rumors all over the place on that. But I just mean like turnaround time for four months, six months, seven months kind of situation. That's that's the question I get most of the time.
I mean, it's a warehouse and they build them quickly. So I hear the target is is to be open and running by just past the first of the year, like early next year.
What were you going to say?
Okay, that's the word on the street.
There's the rumor.
I mean, you never know.
That's on top of the fact that yes, it's a warehouse. Yes, it's going to go up very quickly. It's also a very large project for all the roadways and everything too. So.
Lot of infrastructure, roadways, parking lots.
Exactly. So like I said, that's that's the question I get most often from everyone else.
It wouldn't surprise me if they try and push it to head open by Christmas, but that's just my guess. Okay, any? What's that? That'd be nice. I hear that Christmases at Costco are like a madhouse. And if you have like a bunch of rookie employees that don't know what they're doing, that's a recipe for disaster.
That's why they're going to bring in all veterans.
They want to make their revenue that year.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. We'll now most take most to adjourn.
No move.
All in favor?